So I'm gonna call up my, where the heck is it? I had it. There we go. Hey, so the first thing we want to get to, Chris, there's no, I doubt very strongly, does any reason to go to non-public tonight?
No, not unless there's any conversation about candidates if we get to that point in our presentation.
Okay, gotcha. Cool. I forgot about that part. All right, great. So why don't we get to the, our last minutes from October 7th?
Don't kill me, I have a lot of changes.
Well, I'll let you start then.
Okay, so under business and financials. Second paragraph where it says, asked how compared to last year, that's fine. What should be added was that the, what was sent was unreadable and that Molly was gonna send it, send it again tomorrow. So that just needs to be added. Was that on that page? On the second page, does bit need to be, that's the first paragraph, does bit need to be capitalized? Bit teams?
It should be. Yeah.
Okay, and then under school update.
So all caps?
All caps.
Yeah.
And then under school updates. Where it's the first paragraph near the end, K2 and K5 teachers met with a literacy consultant writing, I think that's accurate, right, Suzy?
Correct.
Should be 3-5 actually, K2 and then 3-5.
Okay. And then. The, under return to school planning, kind of in the middle. There will be no school drop-offs at the NX parking lot. Parking lot should be the addition. And then in the two. Sentences down, there'll be six inch spots. Painted outside for lining up. And then the last paragraph. Where it says noted areas where the sixth student, it should be a sixth student, sixth student. Okay, you got all that? Page three. Second paragraph, Principal Griffith, notice all guardians should be at the bus stop. That's regardless of grade, correct, Suzy?
That is correct.
Okay, so that should be added. And then last. Paragraph, sorry, last sentence in that same paragraph, first students. Will not, and it doesn't, will not require. A bus monitor. And then. Couple of paragraphs down, it says noted 16 of 89 substitute teachers responded as of this date, that is for the entire SAU, correct?
Correct.
So that needs to be added in there. Then the paragraph that starts with Mrs. Vanderhoof, if you look down at the second to last. Sentence, it says, Mrs. Walsh, I didn't indicate, I asked if core physicians are working on rapid testing? Next page. Then in the middle of page four, it says, I recommended tabling the decision, that wasn't me, I think that was Tom. And then that's it. That's all I got. Sorry, I had 10 minutes today, so I read through everything. Do you guys have any other changes or updates to make to it?
Oh, I had every one of those, of course. So.
Somewhere, but.
I'm good. I'm good. I think you covered it all. Unless, Carla, did you miss anything?
Not, I haven't seen anything outside of that, no.
Perfect.
All right, so I'll make a motion to accept those as amended.
I will second them.
All in favor? Okay, moving on to business, executive order number 38.
Yeah, so in your documents, I provided with you with a rationale. Ms. O'Keefe was part of our business administrators, and it was indicated that emergency order number 38 would allow any school district to pull back their DOE 25. Which is your year-end financial report from last school year. If you recall, our end of the year fund balance that we would be returning to the town was $138,780.77. So you can recall any of that, or you could recall a portion of that and put it in this current year's budget. For unanticipated expenses or needs. It does, you know, impact, you know, the reduction in taxes to the town, but it does allow you, the board. The ability to have more money in this current year's budget if there's, for unanticipated costs. So that's what that executive order is in, is an implying. One thing when you'll see in our presentation, we have an accurate on bus transportation, and I was hoping to do a, one bus on a double run. However, it's still gonna be about an hour to get all kids in based on that double run, which really negates it. Because we had 31 students who are indicating that they need transportation, if not daily, at some point during the week, so. It's, it'd be our recommendation to run two buses, which is gonna be an additional cost of $43,000 from when we proposed the start date, so. With that said, it, I will, let me just go into the couple other items that are listed here, because this may impact your thinking about executive order 38 and what you may want to go. If you're okay with that, Tom, or.
Yeah, absolutely.
We've been working with, thank you, you know, Dr. Kelly, who got in touch with the selectmen, and Tom, I know you followed up with Mike Sununu, I believe. About some things that we had to purchase in regards to COVID expenses and talked to them with the town, it was eligible for Gopher funding, and. They indicated they had about $28,000 that they had not spent yet. So we had put together a list, and we were trying to look at everything that we had bought for funding. That we didn't, again, anticipate in our current budget, and that came to, we had the timeframe of September 1st through October 30th of expenses that we've had. Ms. Larson and I were able to really go back and look at everything that we have purchased, and we compiled a list. I showed you on the list, there is an expense that they were in late August, so that would not qualify for this, but it was about $11,256. But there's no guarantee that the town will reimburse us for it, but I do know that they've been partnering and willing to listen to unanticipated expenses for us, for monies that they have allocated, so. I don't think we've heard back, but they do have that list to be able to see where we're at. The third thing, talking about business and funding, is that we did get notification from the governor's office on Friday, October 16th. And he, when FEMA was taken away from schools, or the reimbursement for some of the FEMA funds that stirred quite an uproar. As a lot of school districts were counting on that money to pay for unanticipated expenses related to COVID, cleaning, facilities, safety. So the governor, under the supplemental aid for education, or SAFE as they're referring it to. Is gonna give a one-time allocation to all school districts based on last year's October 1st student enrollment. And he's giving $200 per student, so Newfields will get a check in the sum of $20,200, which will help offset some of our costs. So we do know that we'll be getting the $20,200. We do have some expenses that we didn't anticipate in the plan that we're putting forward, busing being the biggest one. And there's, you know, we don't know where the Gopher money is. So we're, we're about, it's about a difference of about $23,000 that we didn't budget for in our current budget, and this SAFE money was coming in, so. Looking at the executive order, we would have to write a letter to the commissioner of education outlining what we're looking to spend that money on and how much. So there's about a deficit of about $33,000 after you take a look at that for what we did not budget for. I think some of us, if we're, some of it can be found in the budget, again, we're being super fiscally responsible on what we're purchasing. But that leaves us with about $25,000 that we did not anticipate. In our current budget that, that could possibly be used on that executive order, so. That's my super long-winded explanation of costs, but also some revenue that will be coming back to us to be able to help out with, with maybe some, with some finances.
So would we end up with this pulling back of funds from the taxpayers? I was looking at the executive order, and it looks like they have to approve this, and they'll take two days to approve it, which is a pretty great turnaround. That has to be approved before we can pull the money back.
Right, so we'd have to, we have to list out what we're pulling it back and why. We have to have the minutes from this meeting. We have to have signatures from all board members and approval to do it. We've now done this in a couple other towns that have pulled back, and they have gotten the authorization to do so.
What was the, is Molly on the line? What would, what did we give back to the taxpayers last?
I don't have that in front of me, and Molly is not on this call.
I do know it's been sporadic.
Yeah.
It hasn't been a steady curve, it's been a lot here, little, a lot, so. In order to, so in that sense, I don't even know if it matters anymore. You know what I mean? Like, to a certain extent, we gotta do what's best.
Yeah, and I'm.
Totally on that. So Chris, recommending for how much we would be asking for, the 25, the 33?
25 is what I would recommend, which still then leaves a healthy amount to give back to the taxpayers. It is, I know it is more than the year previous, Jane.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, it's, we gave back, I think, 16K more than last year, but that's a, that's a wild guess from memory, so don't count on my memory being very good. But it was more than last year, because we wanted to give back the taxpayers as much as possible. And I, as long, I'm okay with it, as long as we're giving a decent amount back this year, because this is gonna be a tough year.
We'd be, if we, if we ask for $25,000 back, we'd still be returning to the taxpayers $113,000.
Yeah.
$780, which is still, I believe, and again, I'm going on memory, so it's a little shoddy right now, but it is, is inconsistent, or if not more than the year previous.
I think you're right.
Chris, the number 25, is that including the thought that we're getting the Gopher funds or not including the thought of?
No, if, that was without knowing whether we're getting the Gopher funds.
Okay.
The 25, if we do get the Gopher funds, then that allows even more flexibility in the budget, but again, in June, you know, whatever we have, and again, we'll be very.
It's gonna go back anyways.
We'll go back, correct.
Right. Okay.
If we, so if we don't use that full 25, we can still send that back to the taxpayers?
Yep, so on June 30th, we have it, just goes into our budget this year, so it increases our budget by $25,000.
Okay.
If we don't use it all for whatever reason, then, then we will return it to the taxpayers, correct, Jane?
All right, I'm, I'm cool with it. How are you, Carla?
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds great.
Makes sense to me. Do we need a motion for this thing?
We do, and then I'll send a letter to you all tomorrow outlining, you know, what we're using it towards. Of our presentation, you'll see why we're asking for the 25. And you'll just have to sign, all three of you will have to sign off on it along with me, and then we will send it into Commissioner Edelbut for him to review, and they have been very quick, it has been within a couple days that they reviewed it and allowed it, so. Again, there's no guarantee, but we have been successful with the other communities in SAU 16 that have asked for it.
Do you need a physical signature? Do we need to stop by the SAU?
Nope, I can have it electronically, and that is fine, so I can send that to you tomorrow.
Sweet.
Is there a way we should word the motion?
Just that you, you would like to return or ask for $25,000 to come out of the. Reserve fund balance for FY '20.
Anybody wanna make that one?
I'll make the motion that we are asking for the $25,000 to be returned from end of year, last year's fund balance. Did I get it?
Looks good. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next up. Sorry. Okay, did that, okay, so I guess we're up for the return to school plan.
We are, I'm gonna turn it over to Suzy in one second, but I just wanna say thank you to the community of Newfields, we, you know, a lot of people attended the last meeting, there's. 66 people on tonight's meeting, so we really appreciate the feedback. I did get some emails from before or after our October 7th meeting, and, you know, concerns that we weren't on the same page administration and school board, and. And I just wanted out there that we've always been on the same page, we're trying to make sure that our kids are safe, we're trying to make sure that we can have consistent education. We also wanna listen to the community, and so this plan has changed a little bit based on community feedback, so I just wanna say thank you to everyone that did give feedback in any manner, because it. I think this plan that we're presenting is one of the most solid plans I've seen, because it does a number of things, it allows all Newfields kids to be taught by Newfields teachers. It also doesn't break up, you know, in-person learning to large cohorts or blended cohorts, and by blended cohorts, I'm saying grade levels. And it really looks at, you know. Rationale of how we're gonna be providing instruction for all students at all of our grade levels, so thank you, and that'll be part of what we present today, so. With that said, I do wanna turn it over to Suzy, I know you put a lot of work in this and been working with the staff, and. Have you kinda go through it, I know you were not gonna spend a lot of time on health and safety or some of the things that, that were pretty concrete from the last meeting. Really, it's just getting into the meat of the plan, so Suzy, I'll start sharing my screen, and I'll let you go through it.
All right, Vanna, you can move to the next slide. All right, in this. Tonight, we're gonna go over the survey results, we're gonna talk about busing for a little bit, teacher assignments, safety protocols. Our proposed reentry date and the rationale that goes along with that, instructional implications and financial implications. So when we got our survey back, you can see that just over 87% or 87%. Would like to return in person, 13 being remote, and then in our bus drop-off, we have. I believe that's 72, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't have my glasses on. Am I right? Help me out, Tom.
It says 70%.
Yeah, 70%, perfect, 70%. Parent drop-off, and then that 30%, so we'll, we'll get to busing. I believe next. So our transportation, 31 of the families said that student, 31 students have indicated that they'll require transportation. Some of them aren't necessarily daily, but we do need to plan on times where there are full buses. Our most economical would be our, our one bus run and run it as a double run, that, that just means. Doing our outer loop first, dropping off the students, and then quit getting our closer students, so that turnaround would be really quickly. And getting them into school, same thing, but opposite on our after-school run, we would do the short run first. Drop off all the students, then come back and do the long run in the, in the afternoon, so. Because of that 22 students on the bus at a time, but that is with no monitors. And that's, that would have no additional cost impact for us. If we did go for two buses doing single runs. There's obviously 22 students still bus at a time, and no monitors, and that cost would be just over $43,000. So that's a consideration for you all to make tonight.
One quick, quick question, what was the percentage of the surveys returned? Because last time there was that gap.
There's 100%, Carla.
Oh, good.
That's great, good, good work.
I just, can I jump in on this one for a second, Suzy, because we were working with Trish Daly, who is our transportation coordinator in SAU 16. And we were trying to find a way to not have to spend that $43,000 by doing the double run. She is, she right up and she about 6:30 tonight gave me the answer, she's worked many different routes, and it's still, we're, we're gonna have to recommend the two buses. Because it's about 30 minutes for the outer loop and the inner loop as she was. As she was mapping it out, so you're talking, you know, another half hour for kids, first kid getting dropped at a half hour, and then half an hour later, the second batch comes in. Which just would, would really make scheduling difficult and supervision difficult for, for that overlap of students, so. We will continue to try and scrub that to see, again, if we're not, all the kids are riding the bus, if it can be reduced. This time, just based on what Trish gave to me at 6:30 tonight, our recommendation would be for the two buses, so that kids are not. On the buses for a long duration of time, and that we can get them there succinctly, so that supervision and scheduling will not be an issue. So that's, that was part of the reason why the $25,000 was the recommendation to cover that cost. Based on our last year's fund balance.
Based on these numbers, though, it's only, is it nine students? So we, that, that we have a difference, like if there were nine students that could be driven in more, then we would be able to save $43,000?
If, if that's a daily basis, there was some, Carla, that responded that they would need transportation Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or. You know, depending on, you know, which household they stayed at, you know, some would drive in, but others couldn't, so. We, I don't think we know on a daily basis how many we would have, and. You know, if we're following our guidelines of no more than 22 students on a bus, so that we can keep them six feet apart. That, that would ensure by having two buses that we could definitely have that, and then we could take overload students on that, out of that 31, so. That's, that's the recommendation.
Thanks, Chris.
Yeah.
So for our in-person instruction. We have, in kindergarten, we would have Ms. Cattlewood, she would have 10 students, this is off our survey. In first grade, Ms. Hamilton would have 15 students, Ms. Maglin, as our second grade teacher, would have 12 students, Ms. Hager, 20. Our new hire, which we'll recommend to you tonight, will have 14 students in person, and Ms. Rosenbleath will have 18. So, yep. Our K through 2, that means kindergarten, first and second grade span, is a new hire that we have to recommend for you tonight. And she'll have five students, and then our third, fourth, and fifth grade cohort. Of students who would like to be remote is Ms. Bennett, and that's eight students.
How many for each grade are going potentially into that three to five cohort?
If my memory serves me correctly, it's. None in fifth grade, in fourth grade, I believe there's seven, and in third, third grade, I believe there's one.
Do you remember for K to 2?
Yep, there's one in kindergarten, two in first grade, and two in second grade.
Hey, Suzy, backing up to the last group. The, anything over a certain amount, we were gonna, you would said you were gonna break out into two groups, correct?
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, Tom. Chris, can you go back a slide so I can talk them through cohorts, please? So, thank you. So Ms. Cattlewood would have only one cohort, that means one classroom, her whole class would be with her. Ms. Hamilton would have her paraprofessional, which is. Erin, and Erin would be on one side, and Casey would be on the other side, and then they would split, so that's two classrooms. Ms. Maglin would be in a room that's big enough for those 12 students, so that's. A one cohort, Ms. Hager's class would need to be split into two. The fourth graders would be in that art and music room that has that wall that slides back, so that too would be a cohort of just one group. And then Ms. Rosenbleath's class would be those two classrooms at the front of the building, in our oldest part of our building, would be those two. So we have three that would be full cohorts, and three grades that would be split into two cohorts.
Can you just, because I really want everybody to understand exactly what this is gonna look like, can you just kinda give a quick explanation of how the cohorts are gonna run? In case anybody doesn't remember from last time.
So I'm, I'm, if I'm understanding your question correctly, Tom. In a situation like Ms. Hager's class, where there are 20 students, and 10 of them are in one classroom, and right next door, 10 are in the other classroom. We have our paraprofessional, we actually have two in that class, Ms. Hager would be on one side, and the paraprofessionals would be on the other side. There are a couple ways that full instruction can happen, either. The side that, for direct instruction, the side that doesn't have Ms. Hager. Could open up their books, their Chromebooks, and instruction could be given to them that way, as she's doing direct instruction to the other side of the cohort. There could be small group work, where Ms. Hager's on cohort A side doing the work, and then the paraprofessional comes over to that side. Ms. Hager goes over to the other cohort, does some small group instruction, so those are, those are the ways that we would tackle. Having those two rooms.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, so, yep, we can go past that. So our safety protocols, we went over this last.
You know what, I'm sorry, I'm so, so sorry. One slide, Chris, my bad. So I guess this would be the other thing I would also, I know we had talked about this before, and I. I, I think it might have changed just slightly, can you explain how like, the new hire is gonna deal with having. One in kindergarten, two in first grade, let's say two in second grade, whatever the heck the numbers, can you explain how like, their day would kinda look a little bit in terms of instruction for the parents?
That's a great question. So luckily. The strength of the cohort really is our first and second, and our. So there's, there'll be a lot of emphasis there, our new hire is gonna work really closely with Casey and Kirsten, our first and second grade teacher, teachers. Their day will be. You know, they'll have literacy, they'll have their morning meeting, just like everybody, from 9 to 9:15, and then they'll have. Their literacy block, which will include probably a read aloud, and then they'll go into. Either small group, even smaller than five, where they'll do their reading together in guided reading groups. And do potentially stations where every 15 minutes, they rotate in and out, do word work. Do their guided reading, do their independent reading, their diagnostics, then they'll have their break, just like we do right now, which will be 10:15 to 10:30. And then they'll have their math, which that math model, that math workshop model is very similar to our literacy workshop model, same idea. And then in the afternoons, I'm glad you brought that up, Tom, because in our afternoons, one of the ways that we would like our remote students. To stay connected to their classmates, is that all of our specialists will stay remote with the times that they currently have. And so everyone will go on, whether they're in school. With the times that they currently have. And so everyone will go on, whether they're in school. Getting direct instruction live or remote, all of our kindergarteners will be together. So our kindergartner who's remote gets to be with all of their friends, even though it's on the computer, we're still unified. That's. One of our ways that we wanna keep the community together, as well as our morning meeting at the beginning of the day. I will continue doing our morning meeting, which is just me. Saying good morning to the Newfields community, um, giving any updates and saying the pledge. But again, at the top of the day. And for their specials and at the end of the day, everyone will still be together. And that's really important to us to. To keep that unity as much as possible. Carla?
Yeah, quick question. So for the breakout sessions, it, does that mean that there will be like a floating para that will jump on with remote? Like on the remote breakouts for the the literacy time and everything and math time?
It's possible. We have to look at our workforce at that point, but um that is absolutely. One of the ideals would be for that to happen. Cool.
Is there, I know the last time we had talked, there wasn't really the possibility of. Students who were in remote um bouncing between going remote and being in person. If you choose in person or choose remote. Would you need to stay in that modality for what period of time?
So Mr. Andreski, Chris and I have talked about this and I, I think we, we landed on January, you know, twenty-second. Which is the end of the semester. It's kind of a review time um for our families to make a decision. Um, if they need to change course, you know, and there are lots of different reasons. Why someone would need to change course, but we're gonna take that on a individual, one-on-one basis.
And these numbers could still change depending.
That's true.
And if everybody needs to go back into a remote setting. How did, do the cohorts stay like this?
Yes, they do. Um, you know, I, I think it would be those break times, the January twenty-second and then whatever we choose for. For later, just for the continuity and the consistency for the students. There are so many transitions, I think, during this year, that I think that the, the best thing that we can do for our students is try to stay. As coherent as possible um with their instruction. And I, and Carla, I really think that's one of the reasons why it's so important to me. To find ways for them to stay connected to their classmates. You know, and. After, after this presentation, I'll have a faculty meeting and. Um, I think that will, the faculty and I will generate some other ideas of how to bring. The students collectively together and give remote students opportunities to be together if that family chooses. To do that, right? Because obviously, we wanna be respectful of why people are making choices to go remote.
And then, um, and thank you. And then my last question is. I noticed, so you had said we have one new hire that you're gonna be talking about later, but there are two new hires here. Oh, so you two, so you, okay, great. Thank you.
Hey, Suzy, before we move on, I just wanna, this would probably be a good time to talk about this part, cause it's already been alluded to. If any parents listening out there, I don't wanna put it words into anybody's mouth, but it's my assumption that after tonight. If they see the plan, if they hear everything, they wanna change their mind, there, they have time to change their mind.
They do, Tom, but I, I wanna make it really clear that we're making classroom assignments. Based on the numbers that have been given. And.
Oh, yeah.
If those numbers climb, then, then again, that's disruption to where we're placing students and what we're doing and. And we're, we're trying to turn on a dime for everybody and make this work. So um. You know, the more communication, the better for us and the earlier and sooner, the better.
No, I agree with you and I think in fairness, I think parents should understand that if they are planning to, if they're thinking about it. I mean, I wouldn't think much farther than after this weekend, by Monday, they should be able to have a firm decision. And they can understand that. I'm not expecting a lot of change, but I don't want anyone to think that. Based off of a survey before they saw the plan, that they were held to that and that's all. I just wanna make sure that they understand. And of course, you're right, they need to just be understanding that this is the plan based upon what we have.
That's correct.
That's fair.
Are there any, um, I know last time we had kind of ended with the ability to have some in-person. Um, events, would there be an opportunity to have the remote students and. The in-person students come together um during certain periods, if that is acceptable to their remote students? To continue those relationships?
Yes, I think, I think if we can do that, that's sustaining that full body community and, you know. If we can do things outside, uh, you know, I'm making an assumption that. The families that have chosen to go remote have some concerns, um, very valid concerns. And so outside events would be better than inside events. And so, you know, we're already. Um, I was already talking with our counselor today about ideas about outside. The only caveat to that is um busing and transportation. Making sure that there's equity for everyone to be able to access that and to be able to um come in if we have an event like that.
Yeah, I think we can. If there's an opportunity for that and people feel. That they, that it's important, I can't imagine that they wouldn't. I think that that would be, you know, not the whole school at the same time, but maybe certain classrooms of. Would have that opportunity.
I absolutely want that. I, I think our teachers, our students, um, our families, we're all on the same page of, of really wanting to. Keep everybody together as a one-school community as best we can. And any creative solution. Your ideas that we have around that, I think, you know, we're, I'm very open to. Alright, Chris, you ready? So our safety protocols, we, we went over these um last time, but just to reiterate them for anybody who might be new on our call. Our desks will be six feet apart, there will be assigned seating, there will be no rugs or um soft materials. We will have frequent mask breaks. Um, our cleaning uh is fantastic. It will happen at the end of the day. Um, as well as during the day, at high, high-touch-point areas. Um, our classroom belongings will be next to us, um, most likely in a bin, not even in cubbies. Um, so that everything. That's for that child is in their direct space. Um, library books will be returned and collected and quarantined for three days. Before we put them back in rotation. Alright.
Oops, sorry.
That's okay. So, um, you know, uh, I, we would like to propose. Uh, the November ninth date to be the day that we come back in full, and there are a couple reasons for that. Uh, we have, Newfields will be hosting uh voting this year instead of at the town hall. And so that's Tuesday, November third. Um, three days to turn around the building. And to get um quite a bit of furniture out of rooms and have teachers set up. Will be a lot when teachers, we don't wanna disrupt much of the learning. And so. That's a quick turnaround between Wednesday, Thursday and Friday to do that. And of course, we have our Halloween, no, that's not, we don't have our Halloween parade on November. Six, cause we're gonna have Halloween parade on the thirtieth of October. And then our hope for Friday, uh, November sixth is that that would be our first day that our kindergarteners are back in. So that they can have the building to themselves. If you guys remember, this is their first experience with school. And so just to, to um teach them where the bathrooms are, where we're gonna enter, all those. With a much quieter environment, um, I think would be beneficial. And then we would all come back on the ninth. Have the ninth and tenth together. Um, eleventh is of course Veterans Day, so it's a national holiday and we all have off. And then the twelfth and thirteenth. Um, so in some ways, that's a really nice week because we'd have two days. And then a break and then another two days and then go in for that full week through the sixteenth through the twentieth.
So we'd only have one full week of school in Oc, in November.
That's true, but even if we did it earlier, which I, I don't know that we could pull off. We wouldn't have a full week because that uh Tuesday.
The Thursday, yeah, the Tuesdays, right? Yeah, we have that off for teacher and service, right? So are you proposing to take Wednesday and Thursday as no school days to get the school ready? Or would there still be classes those days?
There would still be classes. Um, I would ask potentially that on Thursday and Friday. That the teachers look closely at their schedules and our afternoon slots where we have one-on-one time. That they um reschedule those so that they could be either earlier in the week. Um, or combine um students for that week and have small group instead of one-on-ones. So that potentially on Thursday and Friday in the afternoon, after lunch and recess, the teachers would have that time to. Be setting up. I don't wanna miss any instructional time, so I'm trying to make it work where we.
So Tuesday is no, no school in the building, right?
No, no school. That's, it, they're, they, it's an in-service day, so there's no school on Tuesday.
I'm just trying to understand the red numbers versus the black numbers. If three would be red.
These national holidays.
Yeah, Veterans Day and Thanksgiving are the red, so they're just days off.
Gotcha.
That's not, it's not representing the, the school calendar at all.
I guess like, that's what I was thinking. It would be nice to see this up against the school calendar to see where we're at. But. Do you, Suzy, do you feel as though that's a comfortable amount of time or do you think that that would be pushing it?
Um, I think we can do it, Carla, I really do. I think that Chris has promised to uh roll up his sleeves and. Help move furniture if necessary and um we're gonna ask our custodial staff to um pull some extra hours those days. So I do think that we can have it. And I think if the teachers know, would depending on what you all choose tonight. You know, they'll start having in, in their mind what needs to go out. They can start planning now. Okay, alright, next slide. So I just wanna emphasize uh a few things that are actually. Quite fantastic about our plan uh compared to potentially other schools in the state that I think Newfields should. You know, that we're blessed with. Um, all of our students will be instructed by NEA staff uh when you two, if, if. And when you guys approve the recommended, the recommendations we have for you tonight with the two teachers. Instruction will happen all five days. We don't do a hybrid, it will be fully in. Um, we have the space to be able to do small cohort class sizes, which is incredible. Um, all of our specialists will stay remote. Um. And then we're gonna keep that common schedule so that we can have that planning time and that professional development. And that group work at the beginning and the end of the day. And I can't overemphasize how important that time is because. Remote, um, the COVID, all of the things that we're trying to do. Um, really takes time and energy and um a collective mind to do this well. And um I think we're accomplishing it. I know we're accomplishing it, but. A, a lot of that is because we've had that time to be able to reflect and plan, cast vision and implement. So. Those are the instructional implications and then the financial implications. Um.
Can you go on? I have one quick question before you go on. So in the specialist stay remote, just so I'm clear. That's gonna be things like art, music, PE, library, those types of things?
And technology, correct.
Okay.
And then they'll be doing um other things in the morning. Um, for instance, of course, our librarian in the morning has. You know, she's, she's um getting books out for the students, um, she's putting the books back in. Um, we were discussing with our counselor and our fabulous uh PE teacher today. Opportunities for them, the two days that she's at our school, um, in the afternoon. Three classes, see Ms. Clemmons in the afternoon on Wednesday, and then the other three see her on Thursday. In the morning, what we're gonna do is team up uh our gym teacher and our counselor. And have time outside, uh, team building and doing some social emotional work. And so she'll be able to be doing those things. We know that that community building, even those friendships. Um, are really gonna need to be bolstered. And so uh we were excited about coming up with that concept today.
Hey, Suzy, quick question. Do you see curriculum being impacted? And the reason I ask is because. I know what I do with teaching kids live and we were surprised that it, the little bit of time that it eats up. Between disinfecting hands, between not being allowed to pass, like I can't pass out paper. There's all these little things you don't think of that adds into it. So we had to revamp our curriculum. Has there been any discussion about what the, if there's a curriculum tweak that needs to happen?
Yeah, Tom, that's, that, you know, you're on the other side of this than I am. You've experienced it and I haven't. You're right, there's gonna be um the payoff of having the students together. Will be some of these new nuances that we're gonna have to navigate and it will take longer. Of course, it's gonna take longer. Having a teacher um go between two classrooms. However. That classroom teacher getting to see the work that they are doing at their table versus through Zoom. I think every single one of our classroom teachers would say um that, that. That's really strong impactful instruction when we're able to do it, you know, live.
Don't get me wrong, I'm not suggesting it as a reason to say no.
Yeah.
Really, I wanna make sure that everybody who's listening is getting the full flavor of what's being presented. Because I think there's a lot of times that you were surprised. Parents were surprised that, like, what do you mean, you're not doing this or that? I'm not saying curriculum shouldn't be tweaked. There's always ways to fix it. And some things can go, it's not a problem at all, but I just want people to understand what this entire package entails, really, that's it.
I, I think you're right on and I appreciate you saying that because it is gonna be slower and clunkier in, in some regards. Because we, we haven't experienced that. But um, I can tell you that our students that are in our CCCs. Um, have done a fantastic job and we're getting a little bit of the flavor. Um, learning, you know, how to line up six feet apart or um, you know. All the routines that we're used to being really smooth and we've got them down because we've done them for so many years. You have to kind of rethink those. I will say that the faculty is um very detailed oriented. And really does think through those things well. So um, but, but you're right to point that out, absolutely. One of the things, um, you know, that uh. Well, we're excited about having the students, the, the energy in the building, you know, having the students back in is exciting. I will say that. Okay, financial, anything else on this? Jane or Tom or Carla? Okay, the financial implications, uh. The two additional certified teaching positions um. Come out to just over seven thousand. Um, that's because between the, we already had the position. Um, not filled, so um, between all those numbers, that's how that comes out. Transportation. Chris addressed that earlier, that it does seem like we're gonna need two runs. Um, we believe that we're gonna be able to have all of our storage in the gym. And so because we won't be holding gym class, um, that could be a savings for us. That being said, we have not put the actual furniture in the gym. And so I wanna reserve um a space to recognize that there might be more. Um, and we might have to.
We couldn't do it anyway, cause isn't voting in the gym?
So, so that's part of the reason why we need that Wednesday, Thursday and Friday, Jane, is because. The voting will happen and then we'll put everything in the gym. It can't happen before voting. Does that make sense?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Suzie, in terms of the storage thing?
Yes.
Just thinking ahead, um, has, I, I don't even know if anybody's even thought of this, have anybody reached out to NYA to find out if they're planning on doing basketball? And the reason I throw that out there, if, if they are, Jenny would know. Um, or coming up with some plan, they would need a gym, and if that's the case, I'm all for spending four thousand dollars for a stoney, storage unit if NYA and the school still wants to have something, if they're planning something, I don't know. I just throw it out there as, to me, that's small potatoes, if it frees up the gym for future use, if things were to change.
Okay. So that's, that, um, I think, Chris, you're gonna take the next slide, am I correct?
Sure. So the last slide we have for you is just, um, wanna remind everyone that um we, the workforce is still gonna be an issue, where we've had to add two teachers in this plan, and we feel that it's the right thing to do for all of our students. Uh, however, that substitute availability i- is still something that's very concerning. We do not have subs for the district. I know Mr. Griffith talked to a couple of individuals about being subs only for Newfields, because our other concern is that you may get a sub that's in these six different schools, that's mixing with many different cohorts that are not Newfield students, and that's not any discredit to other towns, but that, we're trying to keep our kids with the same cohort and, and not mixing. So we've tried to work with a couple individuals and say, would you be an in-person sub for Newfields and Newfields only? And we have a couple people that are willing to do that, so that way they're just dedicated to Newfields if we do have to have a teacher who's out for a day for an appointment or such. I do wanna just remind us, remind everybody of the um New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services guidance. And they released a um document on September first about when we're considering transitioning between instructional models. And they talked about level of community trans, transmission, you know, being less than that five percent. That, that would have us being more of an in-person model, um, or a hybrid model, and then if the transmission get more severe, that's when you'd go to the remote model. Um, we know in our area that we're not at that five percent, you know, we're seeing, you know, spikes in, in in cities of Nashville and Manchester, big cities. But we aren't seeing it on the seacoast, and again, I think that's the credit to our community members and trying to be safe. However, I, I, I just wanna refer you to um this, this uh second page here, and it goes on workforce. And one of the criterias is, you know, staff capacity to con, conduct classes in school operations. Way we run it, if we don't have teachers out, that's a low risk, we can stay in person. But if we have teachers that have to be out for a long duration of time in quarantine, that's gonna cause us to have to shift our model for maybe a cohort or a, a number of, 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 of grade levels of students to be in a remote setting for a duration of time. And we, we've seen that experience, I know that um Dr. Ryan sent the COVID update and number update out to the community last week. But it highlights that when the positive case does come up, that it, we could cause, you know, just a cohort or a grade level of students to be out for that fourteen day, ten to fourteen day duration, so. Just because we're coming back, I, I, and will continue with all of our safety precautions, we do have to understand that if a faculty member is unable to come to work, whether it's because of, of a medical issue or a childcare issue, uh, as other towns shift and, and they can't, you know, uh, be in person. That could cause us to make a, a decision to move from that normal state to that more high state, which is critical and could cause us to go remote. So just wanted to highlight that, um, and, and that's recommendation right from the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services.
Thanks, Chris. Go ahead, Carla.
I have two questions. So, um, the, the first one, what is the area that we look at? Is it all of New Hampshire that's that five percent, or is it just?
It's your community.
Just, so we're looking at the SAU community?
You could look at the SAU, you could look at your town community. Um, I think that if, say it's over five percent in in Exeter, but we're at, you know, less than one percent in, in Newfields, it wouldn't particularly tell us that we would need to go remote. You know, um, it would be concerning that it's five percent and it's so close to us, but that doesn't, that doesn't dictate that we would need to go into a remote setting. Again, and this is guidance given to you, um, so that, that uh level of community transmission is by your, your town, um, to, to look at individually.
Okay, and then my other question is with the the, the very low percentage of subs, just wanna explain if there is no sub coverage and a teacher needs an extended period of time. What happens?
So I, I think that I'm gonna be on call to sub if need be. I know Ms. Griffith is, is brushing off her, her teaching skills as well, will be prepared, so it's gonna be all hands on deck for sure. However, if it's gonna be a long duration, that could cause us under that critical strain, Carla, for that grade level or cohort, you know, if it's just one cohort, say it's a kindergarten, that may need to go remote for an extended period of time, and again, try to keep those short, but that's, that's what we'll have to, to go through.
And if they're remote, that might not mean teaching though, right? Like, they might just not have school if there's no subs and no.
It depends on, on the ability for the staffing, if the staff member has to be remote but could teach uh because of, of quarantine, but then we could continue to have them teach. If, or God, God forbid, they're uh ill and unable to, to teach, then we would have to look at other uh alterations to that plan. Um, so again, it's, it's gonna be case by case, and you know, we've been going through it in, in a community where we saw, you know, they came back in person and they had students remote, three different grade levels have, have been, you know, had to go out for a duration of time. The town that I live in, my daughter is a, is a junior, she's been out twice now for, for a total of, of ten days remote, this is her second time. So they've been to school for, you know, about forty days and, and, you know, twenty of them are gonna be remote, uh, twenty of them in person up to this point because of staffing, the second one was because of staffing needs, they just couldn't staff the building because the number of, of uh contact tracing that was um determined would not allow for them to be able to run uh their capacity and such. So that's what we're gonna have to deal with on a case-by-case scenario, and that's what we work with the Department of Health and Human Services on their contact chasing. And who would be determined by them on, on who would have to be quarantined if it is a positive case that is determined.
I think that was really important to, like, just to hear, thank you for sharing that, because just because, like, if, if things are open, it doesn't necessarily, like, there could be great uh inconsistencies.
Correct.
The tune of fifty percent in that case.
And again, from what we're seeing, it's, you're not, we're not seeing the transmissions happening in our schools, and I think, you know, this is I can't tell you what number call about a return to school, but I, I, the public has commented in, in people who are in the medical field, how strict we are being with our guidelines to follow it, to keep our staff, students and community safe. There's that other thing that, that we called our social contract, so that if we're gonna continue to keep kids in person as long as person possible, that we've gotta follow those guidelines, that if your child is sick or has, you know, symptoms, that you keep them home. Because it's protecting them, but it's protecting the cohort. If you travel, you know, outside of New England, that you quarantine for fourteen days and that you, you alert us to that, so these are the things that we all have to do together to make this plan, you know, take, take the shape and, and, and remain in place for as long as possible.
Chris, I got a couple of questions, are there? What are the qualifications for substitutes? If people in the community would like to just sub for Newfields alone?
They would just apply through our SAU website, um, through human resources. We'd look for a, a high school graduate is the minimum standard that we would need for someone to substitute.
And then?
They would have to pass a fingerprint and background check to be with us.
Yay. Um, and then, how many teachers, I don't know if you know this, Suzie and, or Chris, I, this is probably a long shot. How many teachers have been out this year so far for a day? Or, and comparing them that to last year, Suzie's smiling.
Because we've been remote, and so they've all been out, um, they haven't, you know.
Well, no, I meant not able to teach, not, you know, not, that, not, that, not out as in, you know, but unable to teach for a day. So everyone's been able to teach every day.
Correct.
And then compare that to prior years. Um, how many subs have we needed? I think, Chris, you shared with that, that with us a while ago, right?
Yeah, it was about one point, uh, four, I believe, was on that prior slide that we needed uh per day, and again, that can be skewed a little bit if you have a long-term sub, so you're having that sub every day, and some of it as we're doing professional development with, with a large number of, of teachers. But again, it, it's, you, I, we just wanted the data there to show that it's limited for all the schools as, as we continue to uh return in person because we, uh, November ninth is a, is a really a big day where I think all of our elementary schools will be back in person. In some capacity, whether it's full in person with, with some remote support or a hybrid type of model with remote support, so we're, we'll be getting at that, that capacity quickly.
Okay, uh, Suzie, I got a couple of questions, I just, but I know we're eventually gonna get to letting people, you know, get to the chat and ask all sorts of questions. So I wanna throw out a couple of things in the hopes of maybe stopping some questions later in case someone was thinking this. Can you describe for the parents what the recess situation's gonna look like?
Yes, so if the, if the group of students is a cohort, so our kindergarten, our second and our fourth, they will all play together because they are considered a cohort. If they're divided into two cohorts in a grade level, those two cohorts will not, they will play separately to keep that cohort, because if one side gets sick, we want to be, or one, I shouldn't say gets sick, if one side needs to quarantine, we're, we're hopeful that it, that the other side would be able to stay, and so we're gonna keep those separated at recess as well.
Gotcha, and what does the recess, I mean, if I'm a parent, I'm like, okay, so they're gonna play in my group, but does that mean, what does that mean once they get outside?
So once they're outside, yup, so um each cohort will have their own equipment. Um, of course, they need to stay six feet apart, um, they will be with their masks on. There will be rotations, so there will be days that um the playground equipment will be available to them, other times where the field will be available to them, because we'll be splitting those cohorts up and spacing them out during recess time. But they will be able to be outside and playing games, um, you know. Mask breaks will come at different times throughout the day, but not during recess.
Gotcha. Have you guys given any thought to mask breaks starting? Well, it might be easier for you guys. Just because uh older kids, it's a little bit harder. Um, mask breaks is the weather gets garbage.
Yeah.
Days, stuff like that.
Yup. We're gonna have to be those hardy New Englanders and get outside and have some breaks and walk around, which isn't a bad thing anyway to get outside.
Have you guys given any thought to putting up a tent?
I would love to put up a tent. Yup, um, the teachers will be parking in the annex area becau, uh, for a couple reasons. One, because we really want the flow of traffic to go quite smoothly for the buses and the pickups, because our numbers for pickups are, are, have increased. And so there, so as far as space, I would need to see what that looks like. And, um, but I love the idea of a tent, because if, um, like I was saying earlier with our counselor and our gym teacher, for them to go outside, even if it's a rainy day, if we could be under a tent, I think that'd be amazing. I would, I would, I would highly recommend it.
Well, I'd be, so I mean, something to look into, I don't think the cost is crazy. This might be something that you might, that we might wanna think about as, as option, because the rainy days are tough and stuff like that. When you say park in the annex, is that the?
Grassy area? Next to the school. How are you gonna work with that in the wintertime? That plate, that side is super icy in the winter.
Chris and I walked out there today and, and we were hopeful that that could be really plowed well. And, and keep it sanded, um, but that's the hope is to have our, have our teachers out on that part.
Gotcha.
And that, the um side parking lot outside of the gym. That, that's another area.
I have a quick question, just the general tone of, because we, I see the plan and we haven't really heard from the teachers. Um, I guess, how are they feeling about the plan? Do we have a risk that some of them might not choose to come back, or is there any risks there, or are they generally happy?
They are very excited to have the students back. Um, there are teachers that have uh their own children that, that they need to um take care of and be aware of. Chris, if you wanna jump in on any of this, feel free. But I think over all of them, ha, I've had conversations with all of them, and um they're, they're on board with, with bringing students back in.
So just to add to that, Carla, um, you know, Suzie talked to all of her staff and laid out the plan and, and because, you know, the community said, well, who's to teaching, and that was a big thing that we heard, so we wanted to identify that for the community so that they could make their choice um, um, more effectively. When you ask about a risk, there's always a risk that if a community changes their platform or, or teaching instruction, that it could impact one of our teachers. And they might have a childcare issue, um, that they're gonna need to, to solve immediately, and they might not have that. But what the Family First Corona Family Act does, it would allow that teacher to, that day, say my, I no longer have childcare, I E. my, I can't send my, my child to school, therefore I need to stay home with them, and that's not, you know, none of our teachers have said, that's what I'm doing right now. But that is a risk with any of, of any of our return to school plans and based on what they get, and that plan runs through December thirty-first. And it allows the, the teacher twelve weeks uh of payment, uh, two hundred dollars, a, a maximum of two hundred dollars a day. And then we would be responsible to find a sub, so you, you asked that question, there, there, there's always that risk. But we've, you know, Suzie has talked to her teachers, and the plan we're putting in front of you is, has uh had a conversation with all of her teachers, and that's where they're planning. But that risk is there at any point, and that's why that DHSS slide, if a teacher would have to do that, we would then, you know, we would not have the staffing, and then we may have to push a grade level or a cohort to that remote setting, so that teacher could still, still instruction. So again, this plan can change on a dime. And these are the nuances that we've had, uh, that we are gonna continue to have to deal with at, at a moment's notice, but you know, from October seventh, we've already expanded it out, looking at more, knowing more, um, being able to, you know, to try to meet as many needs as possible.
Hey, Chris, just to further dive that one home, because I did get an interesting um email from somebody, and it kind of fits into this category, which is, well, hey, if we got a vaccine, doesn't that solve all the problems? Um, and teachers can all just come back and stuff like that, and I think the hardest thing for the community to understand is each teacher has their own set of circumstances that drives it, and if, and I know you said it, and I'm gonna repeat it. If new, if they live in Newmarket, Newmark goes on, online, and they have to deal with their kids, that changes the scenario. For what we can do, because we just can't say, fine, stay home, we'll hire a sub, because you have sub. Like, all of this, and then all of a sudden, it's an entire grade is, is, is home.
Right.
For the, I mean, and when you say it can change on a dime, it could literally change next week.
That's right.
And I need parents to, you know, just wrap your heads around that, that this is whatever we're doing, this is tentative based upon a thousand and one things that are not arguable, we can't argue about their right to do what they need to do.
Correct, and, and it's a great way that you explained it, Tom, because it's not that they don't wanna come to work. But it'd be a need for them and their family, and they're covered by it by law, and it's not anything that we could, could argue. And I know Ms. Riska and Dr. Campbell have been meeting with people about different circumstances throughout the SAU uh, of how we could make accommodations for someone remotely that couldn't come in because of a health issue or because of a childcare issue, so that's a lot that went into this planning too, and, and we won't get into the specifics, because that's confidential information, but you are right, it, it could change, and it could be a medical issue, uh, that could cause them to not be able to be in person, so there's a lot that, that could pop up that we do not know.
Right, and, you know, like Suzie made the point to you earlier about having kids being separated on the playground, because you wanna keep one cohort maybe out of the quarantine. You know, in that same scenario, if one cohort gets quarantined, the teacher's quarantined. And if the teacher's quarantined, so went the, the para, so I mean, like, these sorts of things, some every, even our best efforts still may not be enough to keep everybody in, like, it's just the, the nature of the beast.
Correct.
Uh, does anybody else have any questions about the uh plan before we open it up to the public to let them ask their questions about this plan?
I guess just one last thing to tie in to everything we just talked about, if, if if our teachers do have childcare needs or for whatever reason, and they choose to take the twelve weeks. And the same multiples do that, where? and the same multiples do that, where we have to then pay that full salary and then subs as well? Could that, or is that going to be something that the the government will help us with?
Nope. Based on the act, Carla, it's a great question. They, the teacher could get to $200 a day on that Family First Corona Act that we would be responsible to pay. And then we would have to pay for a certified stub because that would be a long duration of over 20 days. Over 20 days, you need a certified teacher or to do your best efforts to find a certified teacher to teach those students. However, if it's a childcare and and they could teach remotely, we could avoid that by shifting that grade level remote and not have to pay a substitute for in-person. And again, that's that staffing need based on that DHSS. If we, where you only have a singleton teacher, you don't have that luxury. Some of the bigger schools do where you could shift someone into that.
Right.
We're not as, we're, we're really great that we're small and that we are so tight knit. But this is one of the the drawbacks from being small is you don't have that capability. So.
So is there a risk that we, we won't have money, like to pay teachers and to pay subs and?
I think that's where any, you know, someone very smart told me that every plan that you put together should be reevaluated because a plan is consistently changing or should be changing. So I think that's where we keep keep reevaluating and keep updating the community and updating where we're at. And if we need to at a point where we're, again, when we, when Ms. Larson and I, Ms. O'Keefe looked at our budget, we're being really fiscally responsible. I mean, Susie is not paying anything above because we want to be able to not have to ever come back and say, we're, we're going to be running close to the red and it's March. We don't want to do that. So we know where we have some cost savings because of prepayment in gas or prepayment in oil that can help offset that. But again, it's every time we bring financials in front of you, we're going to give the rationale and explanation of where we're at.
But Chris, though, the reality, I mean, the reality is, if a teacher got whatever, quarantined for 14 days, the reality is, we are not going to hire a sub. Probably if a teacher could teach from remote for 14 days, it would be in the best kid's interest educationally to have him taught by a certified staff member as opposed to some sub who has not been in front of a classroom, doesn't understand the curriculum, blah, 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 let alone the financial impact on that, too. I would like, I would think that that would be the most obvious play anyways.
For consistency, that would be that that we'd recommend that they'd move remote and stay with that teacher for consistency because we don't want our kids transitioning from one adult to another over and over again. We do know the impact transitions have on kids. And if not done well, it it can be very bothersome. So I would agree with you. And that's, again, where we use that matrix from DHSS to make that decision that 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 grade level or cohorts going remote for 10 days because of consistency with that teacher and in continuity and instruction.
But that decision also would be made by you and Susie. It's not made by the board. Like, we're not in a board meeting to talk about blah, blah, blah. Like, you guys are the boots on the ground. You guys are running that situation.
There's two, two individuals. It would actually be Dr. Ryan, based on course issue, or it would be the Department of Health and Human Services saying that you need to have this group of students be on quarantine for 10 to 14 days based on what they've they've found in their investigation of a positive test.
No, I'm talking about how the staff is deployed, what becomes, what we end up doing. Like, that's not a school board decision. That's a decision.
Right.
That you guys, right.
Now, you have, Susie, this plan being reevaluated in January. If we're talking about all of these ifs and financial implications, shouldn't be we, as a board, kind of like taking a look at this plan and getting an update on progress and everything well before then?
Oh, absolutely.
We just put the January date, Carla, for someone to change.
That's Jane.
Jane. We put that January 22nd because that's the end of the semester. So if someone wanted to go from in-person to remote, that would be the most most natural time for them to change.
Okay, so it's not the plan reevaluation. It is the switch from remote to, okay. Thank you for the clarification.
We will give you an update of where we're at, you know, things that are going well, things that we're, we're still working on or barriers that we have. So we will make sure that we give you an update constantly. And I know Ms. Ms. Griffiths will do that with her communications with the community as well.
The other last thing I have, sorry, Tom.
No, no.
Was the, the cost for that annex parking to be plowed and sanded. I know in the past it has not been. So you may want to take into consideration what that additional cost is going to be because it will be, depending upon the winter, it could be a decent chunk.
Okay.
Because that's never been, as far as I've seen it, it's never been plowed. It's never been sanded during the winter time. So whatever extra we're going to be doing, it's going to be above and beyond. And because it's not paved,
Right.
it could be something else.
Okay.
And one other thing, I just want to, I know, I think, Susie, you touched on, I just want to clarify. If in three weeks, a parent has a kid at our school and is really truly concerned about where things are headed, at that stage, I'm assuming they're supposed to reach out to you and have, and like you said, have a one-on-one discussion about what's going on. So you want people to stay, but you are leaving open the pot of the possibility of, let's have a discussion that way. Coming in, I don't think is, is prudent. But I totally get having a conversation if a parent's very worried about the circumstances as they are. Okay. Nope, just fine. I thought you said, I just want to make sure that the parents hear before we get questions.
And there's no guests in the school. There's no other parents, nothing. It's just the students and the teachers and the people that work there.
That's correct.
And mask for everybody, because I know we're about to get asked, mask for everybody, no shields.
Correct. What is the repercussions if somebody decides to break the rules?
So I can tell you that our students who are at our CCC and really hearing from elementary principals around, the students have done a really fantastic job with keeping their masks on. And I have reached out several times because I was concerned about that. And and that is not a concern. We certainly will, I mean, it's a concern for safety. I think the students will rise to the occasion and absolutely do it. Obviously, we feel very comfortable that our faculty will abide by that. You know, if by chance someone struggles with that, that's a conversation that we have with the family and with the student because it's, it's really a non-negotiable.
Thinking about rules as well, because I know, not in this slide, but in last time, there were a lot of like, if your child shows any symptoms that they didn't show the day before, you know, there are a lot of rules around that. And I know, you know, there is the social contract piece. However, sometimes, like, I don't know, some, in the past, certainly in in classes that I've been in, people have been like, oh, I think you're all right. And they, you know, they, what happens if that consistently happens?
So if a, if a student is exhibiting, and any of us are exhibiting any of those symptoms that are on that list, we're gonna, you know, they'll immediately go to the nurse and and a call will be made and that child will be picked up. You know, we, we have to sign in every day. Tom, I'm sure you're, you do this at Portsmouth as well. You have to do the checklist of the basic checklist of the questions that are asked, sign it, date it. And every day we do that as a staff. So that's just protocol. You get used to it. You get your temperature checked. And we make sure that things are in line. With the students coming off the bus, they can't get on the bus unless they have that piece of paper with them. The bus driver will collect all those forms and then hand those forms to the nurse as they get off the bus. So we, we have things in place that we feel comfortable with, will, will hold that social contract really tightly. Obviously, the teachers have eyes on all the students. And if they have a runny nose or are coughing, that's just, it really is. I'm sure you've talked to friends who have said, oh, my child, you know, is coughing, but they have to stay home right now. Yes, that's true.
So.
If there is some, though, if like a kid had, like, a case of allergies.
That's right.
That, if those things are known, I mean, I know someone's probably was going to ask, like, oh, my God, my kid has sniffles. It's, it's things that aren't documentable are.
Thank you for clarifying that. You're absolutely right.
So just to clarify too, current state is every child's going to physically hand a piece of paper to the bus driver and then all of those pieces of paper are going to be reviewed?
By the time we come in, I believe our app will be up and running. So it will be an email to the to the families each morning. They'll just have to go in and put no to the questions if they don't have any of that. That email will come back to the school nurse that we've asked them to do that. Those students who have not filled that form out will have to have it do a physical one, you know, before they can enter the building. But that app has been ordered. We just, we've been piloting with some, with some students at the high school. So we found a couple glitches before we rolled it out with other schools, but that should be in place. Great question to make it easy. Parents will just have to, you know, check their email because it'll come to them every single day that we're in school.
Okay. Pages, you know, like.
And then it will track it every day for us that we have, you know, every student that's in school and staff members in order so that we're not having to get those.
Correct.
Sorry, Jane, did you?
No, yeah, Chris actually asked my question and answered my question in the last speech was piece, which was, doesn't matter if you're a bus rider or not, you still have to, whether you're being dropped off, if you are attending school, that has to be filled out.
Right.
Okay, anything else before we open up the floodgates?
Um, one last question. Are we considering having after-school programs or anything like that hosted at the school? If we open?
So, you know, back to what Tom referred to earlier as far as the gym space, certainly, you know, if there's basketball or the need for after-school, then that would absolutely be considered.
I know Jenny did text me. She said they're not planning on it right now. However, I think we just leave it the way your plan is. I think would be the way to go. And then if we decide we want to open up the gym, we can, you can get a storage then. We save a little bit of money and we just dump everything in it and that's fine. I mean, I think that would be the way to go. There if we want it, you know, down the line. Know that, you know, you're more than welcome to do it would be a suggestion.
Would the after-school program keep the pods of kids the same? Because to me, if like after-school, everyone's just intermingling, then it completely defeats the purpose of everything.
You're right, Carla.
But right now, there isn't any after-school program scheduled. So that would be another bridge you're going to cross when we finally get to that one, right? Susie, is that my take?
Yes.
Okay. So current state, no after-school.
That's correct.
Gotcha. All right, anything else? All right, folks, so we're going to open it up. Please, as always, try to be respectful and ask away. Oh, no questions. Great.
Just wait.
Everyone's typing.
There's no way we thought of everything.
So, Tom, it looks like Kristen Johnston has her hand raised. So I can.
Yeah, go ahead.
If you want and unmute people, if she has something that she would like to add as our health physician, comfortable with me, who would have a Dr. Johnston?
Yeah, that's fine.
No, she's okay. She put it in the chat. She didn't mean to.
We're good.
Okay, then we'll start going down through some of these. Somebody asked, I thought you were going to tell us who the new hires were for fourth grade. That won't occur till afterwards where we will be presented where they are. And then we'll make a decision on whether to hire them or not. So we know they're going to be new and that's about it. Paul would like to know if, Susie, could you explain a little bit more, like, what will the mask breaks look like? How long are you planning on them? How often? Are they always going to be outside?
So we would love for them to be outside. We'd love for our students to be outside as much as possible. Currently at our CCC Community Care Center, we take a morning break for snack. And so the students obviously don't have their masks on then. We go outside and walk around the building or to the side of the building. And our students are six feet apart. They, when we're walking around the building, it's just a nice two to four-minute walk where we're all six feet apart and their masks are off. And again, the students have done an all-star job with this. They they don't push it. They don't push the rules or the boundaries. They're very, very respectful of it. We put our masks back on before we enter back in the building.
Okay, how many times during the day do you guys do that?
Well, we between our break.
Before, you know what I mean? Like, sometimes it depends upon what you're doing that day.
That's right. I would say that the mask breaks are probably four times a day.
Okay, gotcha. And I know Paul's asking about always outside. That is what you try to do. I know we do indoor mask breaks. If you have a big enough area that is well-ventilated, blah, 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 we can get away with it if you have a small number of kids. So if the gym isn't packed, you guys might have other ways in there. I think it's safe to say that in terms of mask breaks, Susie, whatever it is you're going to do, you're going to make it as safe, following guidelines as humanly possible.
Yep. That's the, that's, that's the.
That's the plan. The next thing is more of a, just a comment. This sounds very stressful for teachers. This is ridiculously stressful for everybody. If you teach with a mask all day, you have no idea the lack of oxygen that gets to your head. You are exhausted by the end of the day. And I'll tell you, parents, your kids are going to come home like it was the first two, two days of normal school. And that's going to be pretty much a daily occurrence because it is amazing how much just wearing that mask drains you. Is, that's just part of it. Yeah, that's all, you know. Could you please describe what remote specials will look like for in-school students?
Yep, just like it is for us now. Everyone will open up their computer and do their remote special off of Zoom.
Okay, cool. Bobby wants to say something nice about you, Susie. So there you go. You got a fan out there. Bobby Kelly, by the way. Double question. Since we need both buses, can we change our selection? Okay, I get what Jenny, this is from Jenny Bishop. She picked driving. Now she's wondering if she can change her mind. Can we have siblings sit together to make more room and keep spacing so they only need one bus?
That would be amazing.
Siblings can sit together. It doesn't change the number of students on it. It's socially distant six feet, so it doesn't change it. That was a discussed about with first student.
Gotcha. All right, cool. And to Jenny's that first question, can people change their mind on the bus thing as well?
Absolutely. We have to provide transportation by law. We have all 100 kids coming back on a bus. We are going to be CS here. That'll be part of the plan.
I was just going to say, do you want me to throw out the fact that this change and change and all of a sudden the 40,000 is now 60,000 or 80,000? So.
Again, again, we, we ask parents to drive because it will keep it down. But if their parents do need transportation, it changes. Absolutely. Let us know so that we know we can add them to to our pickup.
Next question, if a student is quarantined as a precaution, will they be work available for them to keep up with the classes?
Yes.
There you go. How would lunch work?
Lunch works where they stay in their cohort and they are six feet apart. At least in most of the classrooms, it's even more than six feet apart and they eat. If they get a hot lunch, then that will come to the classroom. We won't be in the cafeteria. It'll be in the classrooms.
Great. If your child is sent home with cold symptoms, will they need a negative COVID before returning back to school?
That would be a recommendation that they get tested. That was on the the slides in my health and safety from before. If they're being sent, the nurse, Merrick, would would make that recommendation. And so that's outlined. We can put that, all the the guidelines on on testing. And if they're sent home, what that looks like, we can make that available for all parents to look at.
Cool. We have a question here from Bobby Kelly. Just wanted to make sure we have clarity on the Gopher funding. Are we waiting to hear from the select board? If so, when will we reengage them? Or has the school board decided not to use the funding? Deadline for requesting the money is 10:30, as far as I understand. You are correct. I've been in contact with Mike last week, this week. I told him roughly in a, yesterday about how much we're probably going to be asking, but that I would reach out to him with clarity. Chris, have you said you already sent him the thing?
I did not. I sent it to you because it's got to come forward, not from me.
And so I wanted to make sure we had all talked about it before I sent it to Mike. So I'll be doing that tonight. And I gave him a rough idea of the amount of money. I'll find out if Mike wants anything else along those lines. I don't think he needs anything else, but we will see. And then away we go. He made it clear to me that it wasn't an issue. He made it clear to me that it wasn't an issue. As long as he got it with, you know, a week or so before the thirtieth that we, then he'd take it from there. I, he didn't say one way or the other. I am sure the selectmen would want to help us out if they can, so. That's all, I don't think we're not saying we're, I mean, I'm like, we are looking for the money, right, gang? Like, that's the.
Oh, yeah. Please.
Yeah. Let me see here. Okay, so I do not like the idea that third and fifth grade will be separated, not allowed to see each other on the playground. That means they may possibly never see their best friend all year in school setting of separate classes. So if the teachers were, will be going in between two classrooms every day, wouldn't the classes both be contaminated at the point and have to be quarantined? I think there's a little confusion on that one. The teachers aren't are going in between the same class, not between grade levels.
I think they mean between the cohorts.
Right, but it's the same grade.
Correct.
Right, and unfortunately, this is the, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris and Suzie, this is the only way we can get them back safely is if we don't mix. And this is one of the drawbacks to this plan. I mean, that's just the reality of what this plan entails.
So when Amber's saying, if there is, I think she wants clarification on where that teacher is going to be. So if you have a third grade teacher or a fifth grade teacher going between both of the cohorts that are in that classroom, and if one cohort got sick, wouldn't the second cohort from that same grade also have to be quarantined because of the teacher going back and forth?
They very well could be, but it could be the symptoms showed up on Saturday or was determined through the investigation by the Department of Health and Human Services that it happened outside. And only one, one cohort would need to be quarantined. But it very good possibly be that the teacher or a professional could be quarantined with them. In one case this year, it was a cohort that we dealt with and five teachers because they intermingled. But the other two cohorts were able to stay in person. So again, it gets back to that contract chasing with Department of Health and Human Services when we know that there's a positive case. I agree with Amber, it's, school is different and it's awful that our kids can't play together on the playground. I empathize with you totally. But if we're going to keep kids, again, there's there's certain concessions that we have to make in our plan to be able to do this in person learning. And this is one of them, that six feet rule is so important that we to be able to prolong the amount of time we're in, we're in person. So there's a lot in all of these plans that we don't like and that we are going to have to say, we're going to have to accept it if we want our kids to be in person.
Okay, next up, last year, temperature was a factor in if the children went outside or not. Is there a plan for if it is too cold or conditions are poor?
Do we stay inside?
There isn't a gym option because that's going to end up mingling everybody.
Oh, yeah, I mean, and that's something played that Suzie and with help with Chris are going to have to figure out. And a lot of things could happen, Suzie. I am sure when the time comes and luckily we got time here, you'll let people know how those days are going to go.
Yeah, I would recommend everyone be prepared to wear your snow gear every day. And unless it's, we're going to be putting students at risk, then we keep them inside because it's the temperatures is too cold. But, you know, there were certain times where it was maybe thirty degrees and we kept kids in. That probably isn't going to be the case, or if there was just a little bit of rain. So I would say make sure they have their gear so we can get them outside. One, just just to give them the break from their mask to get outside, but also give them that different environment, but be prepared to have your snow gear on a daily basis.
Someone has asked for clarification about January twenty second for the return choice chain. I'm not sure if anybody just wants to repeat it real quick as to what the thought process is for January twenty second in terms of them changing where they are their plan for.
That's the natural transition from between semesters. So we'd ask, you know, parents to commit to the way that they have in their survey. Again, if there's someone that saw this plan and said, ooh, that's not what I choose to get in touch with Suzie quickly because our numbers and our plan was built on what we surveyed people. So if they are going to change, we'd ask for that. But it, once November night starts, we'd ask for you to commit until January twenty second. And then we'll reevaluate it again, you know, both Tom and Suzie said, if there's a family that has a detrimental need, doesn't mean that it's not a no brainer that we couldn't switch them, but they would have to communicate that individually. But for continuity and consistency, we are asking for parents to commit to this plan to January twenty second, which is the natural transition time in semesters.
And if their question revolved around how you change on January twenty second, Chris, I'm assuming that sometime after, you know, end of December, early January, there's going to be another survey going out to find the, right? I mean, there is, I mean, it's not just going to be like, hey, make a decision. Here we are, I mean, there's going to be thought put into it, there's going to be discussions at the school board level about how things are going. We'll know much more about vaccines, no vaccines and blah, blah, blah. So I think parents should rest assured, there's going to be a lot of information up until that twenty second before you have to make another decision.
Correct.
Okay. Someone asked about lunches, which we have talked about. Suzie, the milk program still on?
Yes.
Okay, if I choose to homeschool, can my child still get services? Keyword being homeschool, if they make their kid out for homeschool, they lose the right to have services.
Correct.
You'd be better off, folks, to keep them in remote and get your services that way. But if you sign them out for homeschooling, you do lose your services. Okay. Tests are requested but not required to return to school after symptoms, question mark.
So if they don't get the testing, then we'd be, they would be treated as if they're positive? And then would be based on that time, time, ten to fourteen days?
Right. How will interventionists work with students in a variety of cohorts?
Interventionist, the students will still see their interventionist as well as our special education students receiving their services as well.
Okay. Since specials are going to be continue to be taught remotely, are we able to pick up our children up after lunch to participate in them at home?
Well, there's also a bigger block of time. Our specials don't take up that entire afternoon. And so, you know, the expectation that is a full day of school and that we're still doing instruction. In fact, I would argue that they're in school, this is the time that we can really get some great instruction in and, and it's just like the, it will be instruction, just like the morning.
Okay. If parents decide to unenroll their child and homeschool, are they able to reenroll them later in the year? And I know this answer, so you can reenroll them the minute you want to. It's not, unrolling them is easy, homeschool them, you fill out a piece of paper, sign it, away you go. Reenrolling them is nothing more than coming and saying you're reenrolling them. It's very, very simple to do. Okay. Okay. Let me see here, Christian's offering to help answer any questions. So far, we haven't any that I haven't been comfortable with, I think anybody else has. So it's up to the school nurse to decide on the necessity for a COVID test? Question mark. Anybody want to take a stab at that? And I think the thought is, is Christie Merrick deciding who is getting tested and not getting tested?
No, it's the recommendation, again, this has been laid out since August that this is the guidelines we're following. If they have the symptoms, it'd be our recommendation to get tested. And if they choose not to, then we treat them as if they're positive and then they would be quarantined accordingly.
Right, and I think, Chris, to your point, I think sometimes people confuse the person giving the message with the person deciding the answer. Chrissy probably be the one of the ones giving the message possibly, but she is not creating the game plan for how that's being done. As you said, it's all laid out there. I recommend parents take a good hard look at that so they understand what it is. But it's not any one person making this decision on what's happening to your kid. If the gym teacher will be at the school, why can the school kids not go outside with her and actually exercise face to face rather than looking at a computer?
So some of it is that, well, we are having that, if you remember, in the morning. That was part of our concession with having her team up with our counselor to doing some outdoor activities. Then we really want to keep our students combined for all of their specials with our remote students. And we're trying to give consistency for that. And by the way, not for nothing, Mary Clemens has done an amazing job in gym figuring out very creative ways to deliver her instruction. The students really will have quite a bit of time outside. Teachers are really going to focus on opportunities for the students to be outside and do instruction outside, whether permitting. We want our students outside as much as possible.
This does also, I think, and Suzie, correct me if I'm wrong, not only do we share some of these specialized programs like music with other schools, they're the teachers that would go between classes the most frequently.
Shane, I'm glad you brought that up. You're correct that we share our specialists with other schools. And so we want to be careful of that so that we keep it within our, within our community.
If the fifth grade teacher will be going between two classrooms, this would actually work for third grade too. Why can the two classrooms, I think, why can't the two classrooms plan the play on the playground together? The teacher and the parent will be cross contaminating each classroom anyway.
I think we answered that one already, Tom, I think I had to repeat.
I, 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 I don't disagree with you, Chris. This is worded slightly different though, and I do get the thought process behind it. I think what I would tell people is, the idea is there could easily be a way, and Chris demonstrated one earlier, that you could conceivably have one cohort not get quarantined and the other one do. So shouldn't we do everything in our power to make sure that that could happen? And the minute you automatically start mixing them up, you've taken out the even possibility that they can't. You also add in other factors too, because if you're going to do it for one, you're going to start doing it for other. And it does increase, even though it's slight, it does increase. And unfortunately, I think it's just the natural pain of this process. So I get what you're saying, the person who was asking the question. I just think that's just how it has to be in the hopes that we can keep it better for the other ones. Can you further explain how the third and fifth grade chorus will work? So Suzie, like just to, you know, I know you've done it once, but clearly someone could have missed part of this. How is, it doesn't matter, take fifth grade, how is their fifth grade going to go?
So for instance, we come here at nine o'clock, morning meeting. Everyone will open up their Zoom. If you're remote or live, we'll get our morning message, we'll all get the same morning message. Then direct instruction, if direct instruction happens right at nine fifteen, cohort A might have Ms. Rosenbleath on their side. And cohort B has the pair professional on that side, Ms. Smith. That side might have, Ms. Smith's side might have the either the projector, having Ms. Rosenbleath on the projector, describing it and having that direct instruction that cohort A side is having. That's one way you could do it. If it's smaller groups, Sarah would be on one side doing the small group instruction and then follow up on the other side, do the other instruction. So there's creativity that the teachers, you know, will learn and as we do it, we'll get better at it, you know, but I think we have a good plan going in.
Is a good way to look at it is really what you kind of have is two fifth grade classes. Because the two aren't going to meet.
That's right.
And you have two third grade classes, they just happen to be being taught by the same people. But one kid from one class isn't going to be hanging out with the other kid from the other class during the school day.
That's right, Tom.
Okay. If parents unenroll their child, what is the impact on the school financially and operationally? Theoretically, there could be an impact financially. I would tell you this, though, to me, it doesn't matter. If a parent feels strongly that it's in the best interest of their kid, it's irrelevant if it affects our school budget, if it affects operations, like what, to a certain extent, people got to do what they got to do. Fine with people deciding that that's the case. And that's a rabbit hole that I don't ever want people to feel pressure that somehow their decision is going to impact something else. People get what they do. Okay, what we got? If students are using Chromebooks during the day, will they need to bring them from home or is there an adequate supply?
No, we'll need the Chromebooks back. We are right at our level of capacity. They'll come back to school with them.
Okay, gotcha.
If we have to shift back to remote at any point as a whole school, the computers would then shift back to home.
Gotcha, okay. So they won't need the Chromebooks at home while in school doing stuff?
That's right.
They would still need them in class for like PE and things along those lines. So they would have their own personal Chromebook, but it would stay at school.
Yes.
Okay. Will both fifth grade classes have equal time with the teacher for a face to face instruction?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so students, Suzie, are not to bring their own personal laptops to school?
That's correct.
Okay, everything will be provided by the school?
Yep, that's a great question.
Beautiful. Okay, we already answered that one. Okay, so far I am at the end of the list. We'll give it a minute here before we shut this thing down. I hope people got everything they wanted answered. I also hope that if you didn't, or if you're at all confused, please reach out to Suzie and have a conversation with her. Does NES have the Wi-Fi capability for all the students?
Yes.
Cool. Okay. I'm thinking we've pretty much handled it. So Chris, if you want to shut this thing down, man, we'll move it along.
So Suzie, actually, that's actually a good question, the Wi-Fi capability. Have you done any type of testing to ensure that all students that are, could be on Wi-Fi? Like that capacity planning at all? Have we tested the Wi-Fi to make sure that like the volume of kids that are going to be in the school could access and still be viable? Have we done any capacity planning?
Remember that we're looking at only three classes that will need to be in cohorts. So right there, it's not the whole school that will be on. So you're looking, you're looking at those three classes and that's it.
But we have those three classes plus the specialist time, right? So, yeah. So it is potentially the afternoon is going to be your higher risk for that increased capacity.
That's correct. We have not done that test because from day one, all of our Chromebooks have been out with our students for their instruction. So there will have to be some scheduling that happens. At, with Charisse will sit down and, and look at those high volume times and get creative around those high volume times.
Yeah, I'd highly recommend getting some capacity testing done just to make sure you don't lose that. Because, believe me, I've been part of that issue just because of the amount of things that go on. And it can be incredibly frustrating and it's hard to negotiate that in those first few weeks of school.
Okay, so in terms, everybody have the questions before we kind of just wrap this up in terms of the plan? Because we're going to have to talk about what our decisions are? Any questions for these guys? Okay, so Carla, we'll start with you. What's your thoughts on yay or nay on the plan?
Um, well, I think you guys did a fabulous job, you know, I guess, answering a lot of, a lot of the uncertainties that we had from the last plan. You know, there were a lot of things that were like, ooh, that didn't seem quite right. So I think this one is a lot more, I guess, viable? Does that make sense? And I, I love that we've really solved a lot of the risk, like the health risk scenarios. And I mean, looking at the, the statistics that came in on the surveys, a hundred percent is a pretty good read there. So, so I mean, I guess, I mean, I still worry on the risk side. You know, I study risk for my business and exponentiality all the time. I know the reality of the fact is, it's not going to be consistent and that's hard thing. And I think, you know, just so long as parents understand, like, they may need to go remote. Their, their whole class might need to for a long period of time. But if everybody is still on board with the plan, then, you know, there I think it's just important that we've had these times that everyone could hear those risks. And, and I think that it's been pretty assessed and we've talked about it a lot at this point. We've talked about it a lot at this point, so.
Okay, Jane?
I'm gonna have to. Honestly echo everything Carla said, the risk is super high, it's always going to be, it's not gonna change. But as long as everybody is prepared for that and this could change on a dime, you know, day two. And, you know, if it's something that the community is willing to. Not only taken to consideration, but be prepared for. That, that makes me feel a little bit better. I do have to admit, Suzie, thank you so much for. You know, taking it to consider that consideration, the fifth grade, since there's really no students that are remote in fifth grade. They'll all have that individualized instructions and I know that there were so many people that were worried about that and for good reason, so thank you for, for that. Uh, and I'll, I'll commend you, both Chris and Suzie, this is, um, like Carla said, a significantly improved plan. Definitely, you know, still, still a very, um, concerning situation that we're all in, but we're all in it together, so. Thank you.
Uh, from my two cents, I've given this a ton of thought. I hate the fact we're bringing the kids back, I'm not gonna lie. I, I think if you gave a truth serum to superintendents, assistant superintendents, principals and teachers. Think most of them would think the best way to handle this is to keep kids. Home, except for the ones who need the help and who really need the socialization and then you devote all the money to helping them out with the money we save. Having said that, I know my job isn't to make a decision based upon what I think is best. I know it's based upon what the, what. People we, we represent and I echo these guys that I think this is what the town wants, which is fine. Um, I agree, I think they've got every bit of information to understand the ramifications of this, to understand how this could. Effect them later on. Um, I feel bad that we don't have the ability to do the CCCs anymore and stuff like that and parents are gonna. Have to handle it the best they can. Um, so I think what you guys did, Suzie and Chris, is amazing. I think there's a ton of stuff out there. I think the, I think the plan is a good plan. I have nothing against the plan at all. I just, I just really, I. I would have a hard time sleeping if I thought that my decision could possibly. Absolutely wreck some poor kid's existence because we got them back and they got sick and they had health implications for the rest of their life. The funny part about that is, it's not really our decision, folks, it's the parents' decision and that's fine. So I think in this plan, I think the kids are gonna be as safe as they can be. I think our teachers are gonna do a hell of a job keeping everybody safe. I think, I pray that the parents do everything they can to take the temperatures. Keep your kids home if they're exhibiting those things, because one screw up and all of a sudden, we could have a real problem on our hands. And we deserve better than that at that school. The school's been through a lot, so I really want to plead with everybody to do everything in their power to keep it. That way. So I think we have three votes saying, yeah, let's go with the plan, correct?
Um, and one more question for Suzie before we do a vote, if you don't mind?
Yeah.
I know that, um, in some of the other schools, as we come up into the holidays. And there's travel from, you know, outside of New Hampshire into other areas. Are we asking people that if they travel outside of, um, the quarantine of, you know, the, the kind of the tri-state area? Or, you know, beyond Massachusetts into more at-risk areas that they do that self-quarantine before they come back? Um, is that something that is part of that plan that we're requesting or is that, um, just if people are symptomatic?
That's, that's really part of that social contract that we've been talking about. You know, we're hopeful that people will take that seriously and that that really does have an impact on the community at large. But we can't keep people from traveling, um, and taking those trips, but we ask for the respect of. Self-quarantining when you, when they get back.
And if it's, right now, it's out of New England, they got 14 days.
Yeah.
Now, at the same time, let's be honest, if, I don't know, if somebody were to go away for 14 days, try to keep it a secret, but it comes out. Like, we'll be telling them to stay home, correct? I mean, that's when it doesn't become really their decision, you know what I mean? If we know for a fact they left. I think most people are gonna be good about it. I think I, I, I know at our school, but Chris, I mean, you know, there was certain towns that have already done surveys and. Significant number of teachers are thinking of taking a trip out of New England over certain holidays. Yeah, which is astounding, but okay, I, you know. So, those all be bridges that we'll cross and, and I say we, I mean you two, it won't be the three of us, so have fun.
I mean, if a teacher goes out of the, that bubble.
That's.
We're, we have to go.
Right, it's, that's, those are the things that are gonna be, I mean, those are out of our hands and that's the part is, it's so out of our hands. It's up to everybody else and, but there, there could be very good reasons why they do. You know, they, who knows, so.
Is it just that, that New England or is it if they go into an area that has that five percent?
No, I believe, if I remember correctly, and Chris might know the, the states, but it's, if you, I believe it's. New Hampshire residents are allowed to go to Massachusetts, Vermont, Maine and. I think maybe Rhode Island and maybe Connecticut and that's it. So, you know, that, that New York border, um, Connecticut is the one I'm fuzzy on. But Chris might know a little bit better what that, what that cutoff is, but it's at the very least, you know, we're allowed to go to Massachusetts and. Maine and Vermont.
Apparently it's New England. It's, travel outside of New England is a, is a self-quarantine.
We shall see. This is gonna be an ongoing thing, guys. You know it and I know it. Uh, all right, does, uh, I'll make a motion to accept. Plan as written, I don't know what that was, Suzie, it's like a bomb went off in your house.
Sorry, Suzie, you have to be quarantined, you sneezed.
Holy moly, it's like, what the heck, was I shotgun blast? Um, so I'll make a motion to accept the plan as developed by Suzie. For bringing the kids back for November ninth and six, right, with six and ninth?
Correct.
Do I have a second?
I guess hesitate, hesitate a little, but, I, I mean. It's what the community wants, so I will second that.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
I.
With a very hesitant, not what I wanna do, but yes.
Okay, so Suzie, you are good to go. Thank you so, so much. It's a hell of a plan, honestly, it's a great plan.
You guys did a great job.
Having seen a bunch of plans, this is the best one I've had the pleasure to witness. And I've witnessed a bunch, so, um, that, that, that's awesome.
You guys did such a good job on the health side, the budget side, you know, like there were so many factors that.
And Suzie, I know you didn't do it alone. I know you had a lot of help, so, you know, thanks to Christie, thanks to all of your support people that really. Put in the work on this. I'm terrified of what's gonna happen in the next couple of weeks and when we open, I honestly am. Um, but you've prepared the school as well as can be prepared and, um. You know, you guys have deserved the credit for making it happen and allowing the community to get their wish.
And don't hesitate if there's anything you need from us, you know, like, we'll always be willing to meet if you need. You need any extra support, we're here for.
Thank you.
You all.
All right, so the next thing, you guys gonna introduce us to some possible new hires?
Yes.
Do we need to go into?
Only need to go into non-public if you have any discussion that you want about either candidate. If you're comfortable with. The recommendation of, of the two resumes that we sent to you and I will tell you that Dr. Ryan met with both candidates virtually and was super impressed. With both of them. Uh, one is a former Exeter High School graduate, which we're so glad anytime that we eat one of our own coming back in house and. The other candidate, um, you know, sought us out, um, she moved here, uh, wanting to come into, um, SAU 16. And spoke very highly about Newfield, so I think it's day and age to find two quality certified candidates to do. One for that remote instruction K2 and she's had experience doing that and the other one to teach fourth grade and has had experience to do that. We are super fortunate and we can't wait to welcome them to be part of Newfields and the Newfields teaching community.
Um, without disclosing a lot, which one would be put where?
Um, are, the Exeter High School graduate would be our K2 teacher. Um, that is the one that is currently working in our, in our SAU.
And the other would be the remote?
Nope, she, that would be the.
Oh, fourth grade, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Anybody have, I mean, I've read them through, uh, do anybody have any questions about either one?
I don't.
I trust. The, the, uh, people that have interviewed and will be doing the hiring and the managing.
Has Tom interviewed them?
Tom does not interview them.
Okay, it's just.
You, the board just has to make the, the, uh, the nomination to accept them, um, except for the summertime. They all, the, the, are interviewed by Ms. Griffith and her staff, which happened, and then the final interview goes to Dr. Ryan. Today before our meeting.
I will accept the nominations of the two candidates.
I'll second it.
Hey, all in favor?
I.
Alrighty. Okay, um, Suzie, congrats on the two new hires. Uh, so I think that's it, um.
But just now that it's public, I can say, welcome aboard, uh, Laura Reichel, who will be our K2 remote teacher. And welcome aboard Kimberly Wardlaw, who will be our in-person fourth grade teacher, so. We're excited to have you and, uh, look forward to great things with both of those teachers joining our staff.
Anything else from anybody?
I'm good.
Thank you very, very much for taking the time and allowing us the, the time to bring this back and, and you're right. Very confident in the plan and how it was laid out and the work that was done and also the teachers at Newfields really helping Suzie with this and, and the. Wanting to get back and see their kids and do what they need to do there. They've done a lot, um, and I don't want that going unmentioned. And for those teachers that are working in the CCC right now, um, having to be in that building watching the amazing things, so. I would be very proud if I lived in Newfields for the work that's happening and is gonna happen, um, and, and I, I appreciate the board. Really talking through it and, um, that extra time, I, I'm very confident and, and thank you for allowing us to put this plan in front of you. I, I stand by it, so thank you.
I echo those sentiments.
Thanks, guys, and, um, just, I guess, for the community, it's good to note that if you do wanna make a change to in-person or remote. As quickly as you can get that information to Suzie, so we have a final plan to put together. Please do that quickly, that'd be most appreciated by Suzie and the team, I'm sure.
Yeah, cause from here on out, we're not meeting about it. Suzie and Chris have gotta deal with it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it would be great. All right, cool, uh, unless anybody's got anything else, I will make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okie do, great.
Right.
Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi, all right, guys, thank you very much. I hope you all have a good night.
Thanks.
You guys.
Good night.